All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to tonight's meeting. Can I get a motion, please, that the agenda for the April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting of council be adopted with the addition of M three app revamped for council? Council should not make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing that, all those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that the minutes of the April sixth, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting of council be adopted as presented? Counselor Bevan will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing that, all those in favor? Motion carried. Uh, we have no public hearings, no delegations, uh, reports from administration. Can I get a motion, please, that council approved the two thousand and twenty-one operating budget as presented? Counselor Sorenton will make that motion, and Ms. Bittner or Mr. Passy, would you like to take it away?
Nice. Good evening, counsel. I will hand it over to, uh, Mr. Passy. He is the one that actually prepared the budget this year, so, um, he'll be the one to, um, answer your questions tonight.
Thank you. Um, so from the committee meeting last week, um, the discussion kind of was around, um, seeing if we could get the taxation increase down to one percent. And so in order to do that, what we did was we, um, stopped, uh, certain portion of the, the, the franchise fees that from Ford is coming in that we're going to reserve to just reduce how much went to the reserve this year by about a hundred and seven thousand, and that got it to about bang on one percent. And then also discussed at the meeting was, um, allocating one million from the revenue sharing amount that's coming in to towards the future civic slash cultural center reserve, and then fifty thousand from the, from revenue sharing as well to the, uh, to create a wildfire reserve based on that, um, the mutual aid fire control plan. Um, other than that, there's, uh, not any other changes to the operating budget from last week. Um, for the capital budget, we had mentioned that there was, um, those two digital signs that had been not included because they kind of come in already and were, um, approved earlier, but they are now in the budget and, and ready for that. And also attached, um, to the memo is the, uh, projected reserve balances for the end of two thousand and twenty-one. Um, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Passy. We will open the floor to questions. Uh, council, you have any questions, comments, or concerns? Uh, go ahead, Counselor Byer.
Thanks, uh, through the chair to Mr. Passy. Um, perhaps I missed it last, uh, meeting during the COW. Um, I just want some clarification on that, but on the multi-use facility capital reserve. Um, the two million dollars being transferred out into the revenue sharing, um, just kind of, uh, some information on that, um, why, why it was done, um, and, uh, how much we have allocated for the multiplex, uh, based on what our, our closing balance is left in the reserve.
Go ahead, Mr. Passy.
Um, you're referring to, um, the two point five million going out, or the, the two?
The, the two point zero two two.
Okay.
I'll take it, Mike.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Yes, this, this is a little confusing. It goes back to, if you remember, when we were applying for the grant for the multiplex. And it, there was a time there where we weren't sure if we were going to get that grant. If we got that grant, our MSI money was tied up then with the project. If we didn't, our MSI money was available to be spent, um, on our projects. So there was a little while there where things had to kind of flow a little bit back and forth. Now that we have the, um, the grant, we know what our MSI money is allocated to, we know, um, all of that. Uh, we, there was a discussion, I think, at the last SPS that once that was known, we would then move money back from that multi-use facility reserve back over to the revenue sharing reserve to be, um, put in back into the, into use uh, for the rest of the organization. So after doing all of that, those calculations, um, that's leaving, that, that left about just that, that two million dollar amount to be moved back over.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bittner. Go ahead, Counselor Sharnard.
Hi, just to clarify, we are voting on the operation and capital, as it said, not individually. Is that correct?
Uh, no, uh, we're, uh, we're voting on the operating budget. That's the motion. The next one will be the capital budget.
Okay, so then operating, just so I'm clear on the page, because I will not be supporting this budget, even though I was pleased, I was going through zero, but we're going to one percent, but I just wanted to make sure if it's operating capital is the million dollar transfer. So is the million dollar transfer on operating or capital?
No, that's reserve transfer, which is our third motion. Correct, Ms. Bittner?
Uh, that, that is correct, yes.
Okay, so operation, okay. I just want a clarification on that because I'm going by the paperwork and don't want to make a mistake.
So, all right, thank you.
Only, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sharnard. Anybody, anybody else have any questions, comments, or concerns? All right, um, I just want to thank, uh, Ms. Bittner and Mr. Passy for their work on this budget and the rest of the, uh, team. Uh, this has been a very difficult budget year. Um, of course, um, many, um, probably are not aware, um, or may have forgotten that we are also dealing with huge, uh, reductions of revenues, uh, from changes from provincial government policy. Uh, fine revenue being a, a major source, yet we are still able to keep our tax increase to one percent despite all the different challenges, uh, that we face. So, uh, that's kudos to the administration team, and I think council for making some very tough decisions last year in terms of, uh, in terms of COVID nineteen. Um, while I would like to see the, would have liked to see the increase lower, um, I also believe that we need to maintain service levels, and we have to be cautious as to long-term impacts of, uh, structural budget change, changes if we, uh, if we don't have, uh, some increases in taxation as years go on. Uh, just, uh, for clarification, uh, Ms. Bittner and Mr. Passy, how much are we subsidizing this budget through the most grant as well as the energy reserve? Um, transfer that we're not doing?
The most grant is three hundred and forty thousand, and the, the, um, the entered, the non, the reduction, the transfer is a hundred and seven thousand, so, uh, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
All right, sounds good. So that's about a four percent that would normally be added on to taxation this year that we're not doing, uh, because we're using our savings accounts, so. Um, with that, I will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council approved the two thousand and twenty-one capital budget as presented? Counselor Byer will make that motion. Uh, Mr. Passy, anything to add?
Uh, no, it's just, like I said before, same budget, um, just with the addition of those two digital signs.
All right, thank you. Uh, go ahead, Counselor Wilkinson.
Uh, I just want to get this clear. This capital budget now is taking one million out of a revenue sharing and putting it into, uh, a reserve for some future growth, right?
I believe you're talking about the reserve transfer, uh, which would be as a part of the third motion.
Okay, I'm not seeing a third motion. Maybe I'm missing something here.
Counsel accept the two thousand and twenty-one reserves as information.
Okay, but it is happening in the capital budget that you're, that it's being transferred, or revenue sharing, uh, money is being transferred.
No. Through the chair to Counselor Wilkinson, uh, the capital budget is just, uh, is outlining, outlining what will be spent on projects in the, in the two thousand and twenty-one year. Uh, it's not dealing with any reserve transfers. It's just the amount of projects that will, that will be funded and, 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 and worked on.
But then, is that operational or capital? Because what I'd like to see that money spent on is roads. I can't support it if it isn't, uh, going to go to infrastructure. So would this be in capital budget then? Yes, um, Ms. Bittner.
Uh, go ahead, Ms. Bittner. I'm the chair of the meeting, Counselor Wilkinson.
Through the chair to Counselor Wilkinson, the reserve transfer of the one million, the mini was already in a reserve. So we're only moving it from one reserve to the other. It's not touching our capital or our operational budgets. It's literally just a, 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 a transfer from one reserve to another. So it's not actually in any of our budgets at all that are being presented tonight. It's a, it's going, it's literally just, usually I know we're looking at reserves and we're generating taxes to move them to reserve. This is not that case. This is just, we've already have it in our revenue sharing as a reserve, and we're moving it to a different reserve. So it's literally just reserves, not, nothing to do with budget.
Go ahead, Counselor Wilkinson.
Uh, through the chair, this, okay, uh, this is not my strong point at all, the budget, but it is moving the money from our joint revenue. Is that what you're saying? Ms. Bittner?
Go ahead, Ms. Bittner.
That's through the chair. I'm sorry, can you repeat your, your statement?
It's moving the money from our joint revenue sharing into a future building.
Yeah, through the chair. It's, it's moving it from one reserve to another reserve, from our revenue sharing reserve to a different reserve. So it's not touching our budgets at all. The capital budget is just this list of projects. It has nothing to do with, with reserve transfers.
Okay, sorry, may I have a follow-up?
Go ahead, Counselor Wilkinson.
All right, even moving it place to place, it means we're not able to use it then for road construction. I guess that is my final thought.
Uh, if I can just jump in here, so, uh, so, uh, reserves are not, uh, the reserve transfers are not a part of the capital budget this year. At any point in time, within our capital, uh, work, we can allocate whatever we want from our reserves. So I believe Mr. Hamm is going to be presenting to us here in a few weeks. You mentioned that last week about, uh, some of the road stuff that they are looking at doing. Um, at that point in time, uh, we can, council can make a motion to allocate any money in our reserves to any type of capital work that we wish to, to do so, or do that in the future budget as well. Um, moving that money into a reserve, uh, tonight, um, does not impact our, uh, our ability to do that in the future. I don't know if that's, that's clear or not, but, uh, go ahead, Counselor Wilkinson.
Yes, uh, through the chair, just one question. Um, even though this is allocated to something else, we would be able to take it from that allocation and put it into infrastructure?
At any point in time, the reserves are very fluid, so we always have the ability to, uh, to move funds around, um, to deal with whatever we need to deal with.
Why are we moving it now then? Just?
Uh, Counselor Sorenton, that was your idea, so go ahead. You can speak to that.
The motion on the floor is in regards to capital budget. Can we just finish that motion, then we can talk about reserves?
Yes, uh, Kent, uh, go ahead, Counselor Sharnard.
Okay, uh, just to help out Counselor Wilkinson, the reason you wouldn't be supporting it, because even when we go through the numbers, uh, if we were aware, we have that much money in savings, so I won't support it neither. In other words, saying that if we had the money, uh, I'm agreeing with.
Counselor Sharnard, are you, are you speaking to the capital budget?
Yes, I'm talking about capital budget, and capital budget should have had two million dollars in roads instead of one. So that's the same reason I'm not supporting it, because it, it says one point three with the amount of money we've spent in the past saving for the multiplex, which was a great idea. So if we got an extra money, the capital budget should have had two million in for roads, not one.
Uh, that's a matter of your opinion. I don't believe you had support around the table for that. Uh, Counselor Byer.
Is that my question? My comment can wait till the reserve, uh, discussion. Thanks.
All right, so once again, we are voting on the capital budget. We're not talking, uh, voting on the reserves at this point in time. So I will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council accept the two thousand and twenty-one reserves as information? Counselor Byer will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? We did batted around, uh, in our last, uh, item there. Anybody want to speak to this, Counselor Sorenton? Do you want to speak to why you wanted to move the one million dollars into the civic center, cultural center?
Sure. I, uh, we have, we have a lot of money in the, uh, revenue sharing reserve that is unallocated, and we have a significant portion of our population that are look, really looking forward to a future, um, cultural, civic, cultural center, and including our, uh, our needs within the town administration, um, as well, we have, um, some of the worst grades in our asset management plan as far as facilities and buildings. Those are worst um, grades, and we need to put money aside for those facilities because their, their time is coming. Quite simply. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your explanation, Counselor Sorenton. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Sharnard.
Okay, uh, I like the idea of putting money in reserves, but I also like the idea, if we have extra money and we're not spending it on roads, the more money we put towards the multiplex, the less money we can borrow, the faster it will be paid off. So if we could all of a sudden borrow less money, pay it off quicker, and then we could work on building a second building, not, you know, why don't we get the first one finished and then work on the second one? So the only reason I'm against it, I want to pay off the first one first before move to second one.
All right, thank you, Counselor Sharnard. Counselor Byer.
Thanks, uh, through the chair to council. Um, I'm in support of the, uh, current, uh, motion on the floor regarding reserves, and also in support of Counselor Sorenton's, uh, request to move a million dollars over, uh, to that reserve. Um, I also understand that this is not approving us to spend any money at this time, uh, from any of the reserves, and, uh, that will only be done when council at that time decides to do that. Um, I have learned since being on council that, um, opportunities, in my opinion, as a resident, when I was a resident at the time and not on council, um, opportunities were missed when there wasn't money in a reserve for, uh, things that were uh, possibly able to get done at that time with, uh, different municipal, or not municipal partners, but other partners around our municipality. And, um, I want to make sure that we don't miss those opportunities again, um, whether this is something, uh, it's a civic cultural, um, uh, reserve, um, which can also mean a lot of different things. We do have numerous cultural things in our town and different opportunities, including the library and, um, perhaps, you know, whether it would be an art center or a cultural facility, or, um, the current town administration office is also, um, needing help. Um, so if there is an opportunity for something to come along, I would really appreciate that, um, the council at that time uh, has some money available to, um, jump on an opportunity if it were to happen. So that's why I'm in favor of this. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Uh, Counselor Wilkinson, and then Counselor Curry.
Through the chair, you did ask for comments. It's great that we're going to build these things. Unfortunately, people, I don't think will be able to get there because the roads will be so bad. I really think we need to work, like, on, uh, First Avenue, not, well, in town by the recycling depot, but, uh, the other part of First Avenue out by the school division and Yellowhead County. That road is really just unbelievable, so I would much prefer my expense on that. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wilkinson. Counselor Curry.
Um, through the chair, I would just say that I also, sorry, I'm just trying to find numbers here, but, um, I would also say that, uh, echo what Counselor Byer said. Um, I support the motion on the table and the moving of this. Um, with that emphasis, once again, that at no point right now in this are we actually discussing the spending of money. This is putting things allocating. Um, we know that we have multiple needs of this, and once again, our asset plan has actually said that our buildings are worse than our roads. Um, but we also do have other, uh, reserves specifically for, um, different infrastructure, but for our roads and such, so this isn't a matter of the money is not in those. And once again, if a greater need came up, our, all of our reserves are fluid. They are, none of them are set specifically for anything. This is just saying that this is a priority and a wish for the future, um, but at any point, another priority could come up between now and then, um, it is earmarking. So at no point are we agreeing to spend money right now. We're just earmarking, so I support the motion on the table.
All right, thank you. Uh, great thing about democracy, vigorous debate and opinion. I appreciate that. Uh, anybody else have any comments, questions, or concerns? Um, so I'll speak to this as well. I, uh, I certainly have concerns with, uh, our road infrastructure in our community as well. Uh, that is why we added another sixty thousand dollars of preventative maintenance funding. We are doing one point two million of, uh, road recapping work in the share. We're also spending millions upon millions of dollars on, uh, our, uh, stormwater management, uh, particularly Waste Creek, uh, which will help address, uh, some of the underground issues that are causing our roads to fail, uh, in that area of town. Uh, I'm also looking forward to Mr. Hamm's presentation on the assessment that was done on our entire road system. Uh, I would like to point out that we have still two point seven million dollars available, uh, within our, uh, revenue sharing reserve, uh, that could be allocated, uh, if the opportunity presents itself, uh, as well as other reserves. Uh, one of the things that Mr. Hamm mentioned last week is we have to be also, uh, planning these things out to ensure that uh, twenty years from now, uh, the council of the day doesn't have a huge amount of road work that needs to be done because we decided to do a whole bunch of work. This, say, this year, uh, kind of like, uh, any other assets with fire departments and that sort of thing, where you want to spread out those purchases over time, uh, to ensure that you're, you're more stable in, in the amount of money that's required down the road. Uh, Ms. Bittner, I seen you have your hand up. Would you like to add anything?
Uh, sorry, you through the chair. Um, I do like Excel, but it does only work best when you update the formulas. Um, the actual balance in the revenue sharing at the end of the year would be one point seven, just try of one point seven. Uh, the two point six was the, um, amount before I had done those adjustments, and I admitted to update the, um, formula for that. So I thought I'd just, um, just mention that.
All right, thank you, uh, for that clarification. I thought it was a little bit high there, but, um, regardless, we still have, uh, funds available throughout our capital, uh, project list, um, our reserves, I should say, uh, to address those needs. In addition, uh, as I mentioned, uh, putting more money, uh, into the multiplex to borrow less, I, I don't agree with, uh, because we want to, I believe, um, ensure that the people that are benefiting from those, that facility ten, fifteen, twenty years from now are contributing to the actual construction of that facility, which, uh, right now, if we take more money out of reserve, uh, it's the taxpayers of today and the past are going to be paying for that construction. So, uh, with that, I will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council allow the use of special mail-in ballots for the two thousand and twenty-one municipal election? Provide the applications for such special ballots, maybe submitting in writing or by email only. Counselor Wilkinson will make that motion. Uh, we did discuss this at committee. You have anything you want to add, CEO Bittner?
Uh, no, I think we had a good discussion last week. This is just formalizing, um, council's wishes from committee.
Okay, any questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Sorenton.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, I just had a question, how, uh, email, uh, submission would work? Would someone print off a ballot, fill it out, scan it, and then email it in? I'm just wondering how that would work. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Bittner or Mrs. Persons?
Miss Persons, I'll be passing it off to Ms. Persons.
Uh, thank you through the chair. So, sorry, this is, um, with respect to applications, not the actual ballot. So they can submit their application by writing or by email, um, and then they would receive their ballot, um, by mail or by picking it up, and then would have to submit that through mail. This is specifically in reference to the application process.
Okay, thank you very much.
Right, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council set Friday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at four P M, Mountain Standard Time, as the closing date and time for which special mail-in ballots must be received, otherwise they will be disqualified. Counselor Bevan will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing that, all those in favor? Motion carry. We're going to go to reading of bylaws. Can I get a motion, please, that council give first reading to the two thousand and twenty-one mill rate bylaw number two-two-five-six? Counselor Bevan will make that motion, and Mr. Passy, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, thank you. Um, so this is, uh, by law, we pass every year for setting the mill rate. Once the budget is passed, um, it's based on the amount that we have to generate, um, and then making sure that we apply the correct rates to, to the assessments that will, uh, collect that, that amount of funds. So just a little bit, uh, you'll see in your memo, is we, as you know, the assessment, uh, dropped a little bit this year. And our, our desired residential to non-residential tax base on the residential side of that increased a little bit over, um, over non-residential, um, last year. So the, the desired balance in the strategic priorities is sixty-five thirty-five. Last year was sixty-six thirty-four. This year it's sixty-seven thirty-three. So it's a little bit of change there, but, but, but still within the same uh, close parameters. Um, you'll notice in the, uh, for the Evergreens, um, foundation requisition, it's a, just slightly higher just due to, in the past, we were collecting funds from, uh, to send to a side to a reserve to offset the capital costs of, of, of new Evergreens Foundation buildings. Um, but usually we have some time in, in between the constructions to set aside some extra money, but, uh, they went straight from finishing ours to starting construction on the one in Hinton, and so we didn't get that little buffer period to, um, build up a little bit to offset that one. But it's, uh, even so, it's, it's just a very slight increase. And with the school, you'll see the education requisition, there's a slightly, um, uh, a slight increase there as well. Um, this is in factors, factored because, um, the overall assessment decreased for one, but then also because we didn't know the provincial budget in two thousand and nineteen, we had to estimate how much to collect. They kept their budget the same, so we over-collected, which then gave a, um, a reduced rate in two thousand and twenty. Um, and then that now has to be made up and, and figured out to, to this year, so we don't have as much to offset, um, that school one. Uh, again, it's just a, a slight increase. Um, and then also we, by ministerial order, we have to set the designated industrial properties requisition, um, which is only about, uh, it's a point zero seven six six rate, and it collects about five thousand dollars for the different, um, linear as press, uh, properties and assessments that have to be assessed by a provincial assessor. Thank you. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, go ahead, Counselor Sorenton.
Thank you. Through the chair to Ms., Mr. Passy, uh, in our package, it says, uh, there's a percent column for changes in mill rates, but I'm quite sure those are absolute numbers, not percentage numbers. Do you know how much residential and non-residential mill rates are increasing in terms of percentage by any chance?
Uh, no, thank you. Thank you for catching that. I didn't, uh, I didn't, I, I missed that one as I was adding them together. Um, I, I don't know, it's not off my head. I can, I can provide those to you, uh, after the meeting.
All right, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing that, I will call the question. All those in favor? Okay, I'm going to call the question again. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. Counselor Curry. Can I get a motion, please, that council give second reading to bylaw number two-two-five-six? Counselor Byer will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing that, hearing that, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that the two thousand and twenty-one mill rate bylaw number two-two-five-six be placed for third reading? Uh, Counselor Bevan will make that motion, uh, and, uh, have, have to note that if we have anybody voting against us, we cannot move on to third reading. So I'll call the question. All those in favor, a placement of third? Thank you, Counselor Sharnard. Motion carried. And can I get a motion, please, that council give third reading to the two thousand and twenty-one mill rate bylaw number two-two-five-six? Counselor Curry will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing that, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. Uh, can I get a motion, please, that council give first reading to the automated voting system bylaw number two-two-five-seven? Counselor Sharnard will make that motion. And, uh, we did discuss this at committee last week. Anybody have any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing that, all those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council give second reading to bylaw number two-two-five-seven? Counselor Byer will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing that, all those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that, uh, the automated voting system bylaw number two-two-five-seven be placed for third reading? Counselor Curry will make that motion. All those in favor? Motion carried. And can I get a motion, please, that the automated voting system bylaw number two-two-five-seven be given third reading? Counselor Bevan will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing that, all those in favor? Motion carried. We have no information items, no sundry items. We're going to move on to council committee reports. We are going to go back to. We have no information items, no sundry items, we're gonna move on to council committee reports, we are gonna go back to April the seventh. And, uh, today, we will start with Counselor Curry.
I am looking at my calendar, and I think all I have is the Cal meeting on April thirteenth.
All right, thank you, Counselor Bevan.
Same thing, all I had was a call meeting.
Leading with cows, uh, Counselor Sorensen.
All right, on, uh, April twelfth, I had a youth council meeting, on April thirteenth, the committee of the whole meeting. On April fourteenth, Chamber of Commerce meeting. And April fifteenth, I had a West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority interview with the consultant who is gathering, uh, information from all the municipalities, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, uh, Counselor Wilkinson.
Thank you, uh, on the twelfth, I had a one-hour interview with the West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management. It was very interesting, just checking out our background history as to what form of management we're looking for. And it was well worthwhile to have the interview, I feel. I also replace Counselor Byer in youth council, so thank you for that, Crystal, I really enjoyed going to that. On the thirteenth, a Cal meeting, on the twelfth, I had a, uh, oh, sorry, on the twentieth today, a meeting with Evergreen Foundation, we're being investigated for GST, uh, on our build at Parkland Lodge. It's just really nothing to worry about at all, it's just that we got back a huge amount of GST. So, of course, this meeting today, they had to discuss why we would have been, it's because of a build project. So I have total confidence in, uh, our executive and in our accountant at that time. And I've also had an ongoing discussion with Parkland Lodge regarding placement of some people, so it's been an interesting last two weeks, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shannard.
Okay, I'm like most of you, the only thing I have on mind was the Cal meeting April thirteenth.
Counselor Byer?
Thanks, uh, on, uh, April seventh, I had, um, a combined Edson Library Board meeting, we, uh, initially first had our audit. Uh, the auditors came and presented the, uh, twenty twenty, uh, year, and, uh, there were a couple minor discrepancies based on that we didn't have a librarian for, um, a point in time, and, um, uh, but nothing, nothing worthwhile that, uh, was any cause of concern, um, so that was good to know. Um, followed that immediately, we had our annual, uh, general meeting, um, to kind of designate, um, all the different roles. And then we, following that, we had a combined March-April meeting, because we're waiting for the auditors, uh, to get that information, so it ended up being, um, just a combined meeting, um, outside of our regular time. And, uh, the librarian presented, uh, a, a report that has lots of really nice graphics, I will send it on to council after the meeting, um, that, uh, on the regular paper that it gets presented to is quite dry and, and not very interesting to read, but, um, all the graphics, it really, really made it just easy to pinpoint, um, different things that happened in the library last year, so, um, I look forward to sending that out. And then on April thirteenth, I had the committee of the whole meeting, and today, April twentieth, I, I completed the Alberta Emergency Management Agency course, um, the training course for elected officials, and, uh, I thought there were lots of really worthwhile things in there that, um, I'm pleased that our current administration has already implemented, and, um, I look forward to their annual reporting back to council on that, thanks.
All right, thank you, on April the twelfth, I had the youth council meeting, uh, on April the thirteenth, committee of the whole. On the fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteen, Ms. Parsons and I attended the, uh, AMA Leaders Caucus, it was held, uh, virtually, and a big focus on mental health every morning. Uh, one of the tips that I'll share with you today is that if you are, uh, in a negative state, to think about something positive to break that, uh, cycle of negativity, uh, really important thing to do, think about things that make you happy. Uh, otherwise, um, that cycle will continue, um, and remember to breathe and, uh, uh, avoid negative thinking traps, uh, I think there was a lot of folks, uh, in the chat box during that session, talking about how, uh, they're getting caught into situations where they're thinking negatively all the time with what's going on, so, mental health, uh, important for everyone. Uh, talked about red tape reduction, uh, talked about some of the examples out there, a permit fast pass for developers in certain communities that uh, do a lot of work, that they have a fast pass in which, uh, they can, uh, start work without getting all the approvals in place, so that's one of the ideas, uh, one of the smaller municipalities has, because they do trust that particular developer to, uh, do the right thing. Uh, talked about economic resiliency, um, we had a presentation from C D Howe. Uh, and I thought, uh, I know Counselor Sorensen has asked for this in the past about reserves, and what is the appropriate amount of money that should be in reserves? And the answer is, there is no right answer, um, it's all dependent on, um, your individual municipal situations. Uh, they did talk about, uh, C D Howe did say that municipalities are definitely the best, uh, ran form of government uh, in Canada, because we pass balanced budgets, uh, and don't, uh, work in deficit operating budgets, so, uh, and we also put money away into reserves, um, and then, uh, we had, um, a number of bear pit sessions with, uh, the various ministers and, uh, concerns raised over things such as, uh, the referendums, such in municipal elections, and what is the question gonna be, and how are they gonna be supporting municipalities through those processes, and, um, all the ministers were, um, peppered with lots of, lots of tough questions there. Um, and then on the fifteenth as well, uh, the regional mayors of Hinton and, uh, uh, Edson and Yellowhead County were invited to attend the regional B S N meeting, and there's a presentation from Clay Dyer, and some updates from MP Sorokin, M L A Long there, um, nothing really new to report, and I think we've all seen what's been occurring on, in those, uh, levels of government, so, um, that is my report. Uh, the next regional B S N meeting is coming up next month, and our new C A O will be attending to introduce herself to the business community, so, uh, looking forward to that. Uh, from there, we will go to financial, we have done questions for media and public regarding items from this council meeting.
We do have Adrian with us, just one moment. Go ahead, Adrian.
Good evening. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, first question I have is, could you remind me, please, how long the debenture, what the amortization or the term is for the debenture for the multi-use facility?
Uh, thank you for that question, Adrian, we have not actually, um, went out to borrow that money as of yet, and we don't anticipate doing that anytime soon, but I do think that we are looking at a thirty-five-year debenture, uh, Ms. Bittner, is that correct, or was it thirty years?
I believe it was thirty, um, I'm sure Mr. Passy will jump on if that's incorrect, and let me know.
Thank you, um, so then I do have a follow-up through the mayor, through the chair, to Counselor Shannard. Um, Counselor Shannard, during the debate of the budget, you made a remark that you wanted to see the debenture paid off for the multi-use facility before building another building, so I'm wondering if that means you do not support buildings or moving forward with any major projects for another thirty years?
Um, that would be a fair question to ask, but I, uh, what we need to do is plan. And what we discussed is, uh, where we have extra money, the money, the more money we put in, the less money we have to borrow. So hypothetically, the less money we borrow, we may pay it off quicker than thirty-five years, as the mayor said. We have not discussed the term, but the term would be very important to the amount of money that we borrow, so more money we put in, less money you have to borrow, so, once we've, uh, figured out, once we build one building, let's figure out the second one, so time being, borrow less, pay it off quicker.
Okay, so then I do have a follow-up to that, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Adrian.
Um, so through to Ms. Bittner, I believe. What sort of impact would an additional one million down have on the term of the loan? Or would you still take the loan out for the same term?
That would, we have to crunch the numbers on that, I don't believe we've done, um, that exactly, uh, it would be a very similar term, the, the, the change of one million dollars doesn't, wouldn't really change that payment that much, and it wouldn't really have that much impact on any individual, um, um, taxpayers' bill either. Um, I think the, the, uh, the bench of Iowa we passed was for, um, up to nine million. Um, but if, if you wanted those figures, we could definitely crunch those and, and let you know, um, tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, I, yeah, I was, the clarification was, if it would decrease the term or decrease just the payments over the same amortization, that, thank you. And that's all.
Thank you, Adrian, and I, and I just want to clarify to you as well, Ms. Tate, that, um, we have not tendered the project yet, so we actually don't know the real costs of this project, um, so, uh, when that happens, uh, that could change circumstances as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, anybody else? Questions for the public, Steve?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you, all right, can I get a motion, please, to move into the closed meeting session? Counselor Sorensen will make that motion, all those in favor? Motion carried. All right, so we will now get a motion, uh, Counselor Sorensen, I believe you have a motion you'd like to make?
Yes, thank you, I'll make a motion that council approve, uh, one thousand dollar per year rent reduction due to economic and pandemic restrictions on their operational income to the Edson and District Chamber of Commerce to come from the COVID relief fund.
For twenty twenty-one, correct?
For twenty twenty-one, correct, thank you.
All right, any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing on, all those in favor? Motion carried, motion for adjournment. Counselors Bernard will make that motion, all those in favor? Motion carried, have a great night, everyone.